Welcome to Multiple Offers, a real estate show with competing perspectives. This week, we are talking politics.
Put that coffee down.
If you're good at something, never do it for free.
How'd you get the gig?
Oh, you know, they were hiring. It was only a two-week course.
I will sell this house today.
What are you, some kind of real estate agent?
Ah, he's a Realtor. There is a difference somehow.
This is Multiple Offers, a real estate show.
All right, so we are at episode 21. This is gonna be a little bit of a different episode for us. We have, because we have a civic election coming up, we've got a couple of the councillors here in-house. Matt and I have been really, really excited about this episode for a while. Hey, Matt?
Oh yeah, we've been, we've been planning this for a long time. You guys just didn't know.
A few, a few months. Just excited to get, obviously, we're our real estate companies, the New West guys. Proud about this city, wanted to kind of create an outlet for these guys to come in. This week, we have the incumbents here and-
Well, the incumbents who are running for reelection.
For reelection. Let's take a minute to introduce ourselves and our show. Some of you may be listening for the first time. We are Multiple Offers, a real estate show with competing perspectives. And our usual format includes three co-hosts who dive into real estate industry secrets and tips for consumers. And even a lot of our listeners are Realtors as well. We are local, experienced real estate agents, and all three of us are New West residents. I am Matt Brabbins, joined today by my partner Jeremy Ray. We fly under the real estate brand known as the New West guys. And unfortunately, our third co-host Jeff McLennan has some family commitments and was not able to join us this week. But we will definitely be hearing from him next week, and we'll be really happy to have him back. Thanks for tuning in. Let's get started. Starting with, okay, go through here. I'll tell you who we have here, and then maybe we give them a minute to tell us a bit about themselves, Matt?
Yeah, let's get some introductions and get things going.
Okay, so we have, right beside me, Mr. Patrick Johnstone.
Hello, I'm Patrick Johnstone. I'm a first-term city councillor, hoping to get on for a second term.
Good stuff. And we have Mary Trebado.
Trento.
Trento. Oh, so close. That happens a lot, probably.
Uh, it does. Some people get it wrong all the time. So I am also currently serving my first term in New West. I don't think we can call ourselves the newbies anymore, Patrick. We've put in four years, and we're both looking for reelection and super excited to be in a campaign season.
We still have that new councillor smell.
A little bit. I don't smell, but maybe you do.
Are you, you guys are the two newest?
We are the two newest.
The two newest to the group, okay.
These are the oldest, we're the newest.
Nice. All right, and then beside, we have Mr. Chuck Puckmire.
Wow, and you got the name right. That's amazing.
There you go, the veteran.
Yeah, I've, I first was elected in 1996. I've done, I think, four or five terms on council. I did one term as an MLA. And I'm proudly running with Jonathan Cote and Team Cote. We're not an election team. We are all independents, but we're pooling our resources so that we can reach out to the public greater. But the city has done incredible work last year.
Yeah, cool. And last but not least, Jamie McAvoy.
Jamie McAvoy, I've been a councillor for nine years. I'm a member of the Mayor's Task Force on Housing, and had been working on housing issues long before I became a councillor. Although, the most fun I ever had was when William Shatner let me speak to a Star Trek convention.
There you go.
That was the best council day.
There's a good story, I'm sure, behind that one.
Sounds housing-related.
Yeah, it's good. We could do that after.
He's okay for his housing.
That's cool. So, uh, we're, we're gonna keep this light, but we wanted to speak to the topics that our, our listeners, the citizens of New West, want to hear. We're going to try to keep things moving along, to, to address those topics. But if you have something you want to say, definitely contribute, um, help each other out if you can. We're not, and just for our listeners to understand, as we set up this episode, the intent here is not to hit you with any gotcha questions where we set you up. We, we sincerely, as residents ourselves, just want to hear what your thoughts, your plans are to affect housing in your next term. I mean, we know a lot of what's already gone on in the previous term, and we know that the market's changed a lot and had effects on, on rentals and ownership. But we want to talk about the future. So that's what we're going to do here, and we're gonna try to keep it really constructive. Now, obviously, everybody has individual opinions on these things. Jeremy and I are doing everything we can to keep our opinions out of this and act as facilitators. So all of the citizens of New West get a chance to hear what your thoughts and your plans are. So, uh, we also want to just get a little bit philosophical in, you know, the baseline of where your ideas come from. Why, why did you first run for councillor? Why are you running for reelection? Mary, let's start with you.
Oh, thank you. Um, so, well, I actually was a city councillor in North Vancouver in the city in 2008. And I got a taste for, um, being involved in my community at a level where you can actually do some policy work and, and listen to the community, and I found it really rewarding. So when I moved to New West, I looked into doing that work again. I think it's amazing work. You get to meet all kinds of people at all different levels. And you get to contribute in a way that is really meaningful. And so for me, that's why I do it. I think where, where I live is the most important thing to me, and I want to contribute to what my city looks like.
Well, thank you, Mary. Jamie?
It was more of a natural evolution for me. I've been involved in the city for a few decades before I was on council. And I'll make sure I don't knock anything over here for the viewers, me and my coffee.
Temperamental today.
But I, I had been on the boards or nonprofits of about 22 local organizations. I'd been the president of 12th Street Neighbourhood Society and the Browne Hill Residents Association. When I ran for council, it just, people asked me to run, and it just seemed to be more of a natural evolution. It was something I vaguely had in my head, but it wasn't until people asked me to run that I really considered it. And when I walked around City Hall being introduced to people, I already knew half of them through my community work and community activism.
Yeah, lots of volunteering of time.
Absolutely. And so Chuck, you mentioned before, you've got a pretty deep political background. So as far as city council goes, what brought you there and why are you running for reelection?
Well, I lived in the community for a long time and, uh, close to 12th Street, and there were a lot of issues of crime, graffiti, prostitution. Um, I was always complaining to people that would listen in the city, policing and, and other councillors. And somebody said, well, why don't you just run? So, um, you know, worked on a residence, started a residents association and got active and, uh, was elected and was able to tackle some of these issues quite successfully that were a concern to me and my community.
Well, thank you, Chuck. And Patrick?
Yeah, I think like my colleagues, it just started with being, uh, an activist in the community, about being concerned about the community. I was, I've always been interested in sustainability issues. I'm an environmental scientist. I've, I've always been concerned about, uh, about active transportation in the city. And I became a bit of a, I became very outspoken in New Westminster in my adopted home. I love the city and I, but I saw ways that I thought that, um, we could improve on the things our city's doing. I, I, yeah, was very outspoken, and after a while, when you're outspoken, people ask you to eventually step in and actually do something about-
Do something about it. You had probably, to this day, one of the best couples Halloween costumes I've ever seen.
Thank you.
You know what I'm talking about?
Fill us in, fill us in.
He and his partner-wife?
Sure.
Sure. Um, they went as the, the couples costume, Patola Bridge.
Yeah, and that was an example. I mean, we were having conversations in the city about the Patola Bridge, about the future of the Patola Bridge. And I didn't see enough community activity about it. I know we were having public meetings. I didn't see enough of the public getting involved in that conversation. So, uh, one Halloween, I made a two-person costume of the Patola Bridge, and I went out to, uh, events and handed out pamphlets, asking people to come and take part in the public consultation about-
Wow. And it's still a hot sort of topic. I guess, does it still feel like for you guys that it's something that gets talked about a lot, or people are?
Well, you know what, we've, we've had so much success, uh, when they were going to build a six-lane bridge. The council went out to other councils, made the argument of why we can't handle this traffic in the city. So we've pretty well, uh, have been able to negotiate what we've wanted. Patrick, you know about the cycling and all that, some real good amenities for the people in New West, and not that massive traffic that we were going to get with the six-lane bridge.
Right. Do we want to get into just the jobs of councillors, just to-
Yeah, we're going to speak to that, but I, I really appreciate introducing yourselves and, and why you run for council. Because for anybody who wants to go out there and criticize a city councillor, I have no time for that. None of us are ever going to agree 100% with any of your views. I think that's impossible. But the fact that you're there, uh, this is not exactly what I would call a lucrative financial position.
We're all laughing.
And, and I see, uh, just as a resident, how much you attend all of the city events, all of the different causes that are in town, because you're there to listen. So I have a great deal of appreciation for your contribution, although I'll admit, I don't agree certainly with any, every position that any one of you has. But I appreciate that, that you're there, and I'll have the same thing to say for anybody else who's running for election. It takes a lot of passion to step up and, and represent city council. So that's greatly appreciated. We're gonna move on and help our listeners understand what a city council actually does.
Now you wanna get nuts? Come on, let's get nuts. You decide your own level of involvement.
Well, I guess this is a case where we'll have to agree to disagree.
I don't agree to that.
Neither do I.
Wrong.
National debt.
Wrong. Wrong.
Without money, you lost.
Very nice words, but happens to be wrong. You're listening to Multiple Offers, a real estate show.
What can you affect for the residents? Because sometimes maybe expectations are outside of the scope of what city council can do.
So, you know, there's a, some people think that we're limited as to what we can do because of the Local Government Act. But this council, um, Team Cote Council, we've been very creative. We take resolutions. When the government act doesn't suit us, we've gone to Victoria. We've gone to Union of B C municipalities, and we've, uh, gotten buy-in from other municipalities. We're able to, we have been able to facilitate some change in the Local Government Act. The most recent one was taking the rental contracts out. So there's a lot you can do. If you really want to, you can actually lobby senior levels of government. Just like we lobbied the, uh, other municipalities about the Tula Bridge. There's a lot you can do, uh, as a local government.
So what, what do you, uh, Patrick, let's direct this to you first. What do you wish people knew that falls outside of your authority as a city councillor? People say, Pat, couldn't you do this for me? Like, what's a common misconception that people think that maybe you could do that you certainly cannot?
Yeah, sending me a tweet to complain that your garbage didn't picked up, didn't get picked up?
Does that happen?
Is, is, it happens all the time. It's not the most effective way to get that problem solved, unfortunately. I mean, a, a city councillor, we are ultimately executives of the city. We, we direct policy, we manage the budget, we do those big things. We've got a, an operation of, you know, more than a thousand employees. We've got, you know, $200 million budget. And a lot of those, those sort of day-to-day minor things, honestly, we're not the best people. You should, you should contact engineering and let, and get that work. You know, there are ways to contact the staff who are doing that work. If you're not getting resolution, if you're not getting help, then come talk to city council and say that I didn't get, you know, I-
Yeah, I tried the appropriate channels and it was unsuccessful, right?
That's, I think, a better thing, a better way for council. And it's really difficult as a councillor, even myself, not to get involved at that day-to-day operation level. Because it, I don't think it's functional for an organization of any size when, when, um, when the executive types try to, try to, manage that day-to-day operation, not let the professional staff do their jobs.
Yeah, I think it's important in any big business operation, which the city of New West is, although it's a small community, to respect the, the hierarchy, you know, the systems of people report to different individuals who have a special knowledge of what's going on there. Jamie, what do you think about, like, specifically council and housing? Do you think there's a limitation there where people expect a lot from you and what you can affect on housing? Or is there something that you want people to know that this is where council really can affect housing? Without getting too deep into it, because we have lots of questions for you later. But as a general stance, because I do want to clarify, I, I'm hoping some of our listeners right now maybe aren't from New West and want to understand how they can select the right candidate when they're voting in their municipal election. If it's back in Mary's former community of North Van or Vancouver or Burnaby or Coquitlam. What should they think that their councillor could do when they're standing up there at the podium and saying, this is what I will do? Is it realistic for housing, Jamie?
I hope people expect a lot of us out of housing. Having said that, there is the proviso that there are certain powers we don't have, and we face that all the time. For example, we don't have the power to deny a building permit for a rent eviction. That we're legally prohibited by the, by the Local Government Act. But having said that, it's important that your council not be complacent on issues, right? And, and if, uh, we, we play a tremendous role in advocacy. We meet with cabinet members, we meet with government officials. We took five motions to the Union of B C municipalities, and they all passed. And in fact, we actually have a formal strategy as our Team Cote City Council that we punch above our weight in New Westminster. We're 1.5% of the provincial population. But I can tell you that we've been effective in having a lot more than 1.5% of the say in the province.
Right. I think we'll talk a bit more about some of that stuff, too. Chuck?
This is one example. Nobody was building rentals in New Westminster, and residents were coming to us and saying they had nowhere to go when, uh, uh, they were having to move out of the area. So we got creative and, uh, we waived some legal fees, we waived some construction fees. We gave some parking variances when they were in proximity of transit. And, uh, we created a significant growth in, in rental apartments, which now other local governments are, are doing as well.
I've certainly noticed that. Are you speaking to someone that are in downtown New West?
Correct.
I feel I've noticed quite a few rental towers coming up that-
There's two, two big new ones that are getting close, I think.
There's a thousand new dedicated purpose-built rental units being built in New Westminster. That is huge for our city. It's for the city of our size. It is more per capita than any other city in the lower mainland is building. And that's because of policy the city has created that has provided incentives to developers, to make, to make it, to make it economically viable for them to build rental buildings. And, uh, it's really important for New Westminster, uh, 40, 45% of our population in New Westminster are renters. And there really hasn't been any new rental built across the region for the last decade. And so it's been, uh, so it's been important for us to make sure that we're bringing in new rental stock. As we saw vacancies drop below 1% and stay below 1% for a long period of time.
Right.
I just want, I, you know, um, following up on that, I want to add that, um, there's, it, being a city council is multifaceted. There are things that you can do easily. There are things that are harder, take longer. There are things that require advocacy with other levels of government. One of the things that I think was, is really amazing about our community is when I sat on the seniors committee, I think it was when I first got on, so say, four years ago. We started to hear at the table that a lot of seniors were getting rent eviction notices in their buildings. So four years ago, we started talking about this issue, an issue that has become a, a real problem in other communities. Now luckily, um, the city of New West had put in some policy to affect change there. But we are also having very serious conversations, uh, with our city staff about, uh, additional policies that will protect people. And so being a city councillor doesn't mean just doing this one part of the job. It means doing that job, but also looking ahead. What are the things that are coming that we need to be dealing with now before they get here?
The big, big picture stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
So is that still part of something moving forward? Um, the next sort of term here is, is still need rental. Even though we've added about 1,000 units, it's still gonna be a challenge moving forward.
It's still a challenge for people. I mean, there, even, you know, there's a lot of people that will criticize the fact that a lot of the rental we're putting in is unaffordable, and that is true. But it is rental for some people, and it means that there's more, there's more supply. And when there's more supply, it means that people can't charge as much as they'd like to, because there's a lot of options. And so it's, it's not a simple answer. It's a very complex answer. But it's something that we have to do the whole spectrum, just not one end or the other.
And that's a problem that needs a regional solution, and this is where the advocacy and working with our partners across the region are important. New Westminster could put in 30,000 rental units. It doesn't impact fundamentally the economics of the region's rental market.
Right.
You know, for, uh, Vancouver to build 10,000 rental units.
Yeah, I mean, as a, as a residential real estate agent who deals mostly with, with purchases, when I hear that, what I'm, what I'm noticing is when, when you approve to build a 100-unit condo tower that goes for sale, a, a large portion of those units typically are not occupied by owner-occupiers in the first few years. That's just status quo. That's the process of how it goes. But not necessarily all of them are rented out, right? So what you're doing by having a dedicated rental structure is that you're, you're certainly, you're committing to that rental stock being there for the long term. So it does make more of an impact, I think, on affecting rental versus adding condos that are, uh, you know, strata-owned.
Can I just touch on one other thing that we were leaders on, and that's, uh, family-friendly housing? And so we actually met with the development community, and we said, look, we're going to start to mandate three-bedroom units. There was a bit of pushback at the beginning. Uh, council consulted. Uh, we went ahead and did it. And the, uh, industry was actually quite appreciative now. They, they realize that these places are still selling just as well, in some cases, better.
Great. And I want to go back to one thing. Uh, Jamie, you had mentioned, uh, that you can't deny a rent eviction application. And so again, speaking to our broad audience, not just in New West, and they say, well, what can a council do? I think it's important, and I don't fully understand the, the role of council, but I do realize that you are not lawmakers. You don't sit there in council chamber and say, I'm going to decide that my vote is just going to change the rules. Now, you may have an effect on voting as a collective to change bylaws and change the way things are done at the city. But at the time that a demolition application comes, or the reason why you brought in the heritage conservation area is that you had to act within the rules that existed. You have to respect the bylaws that are in place. Is that a fair statement? Can you, can you add to that? Can you tell me I'm wrong?
There are times every single week where I wish I had the power to change the Local Government Act or, or to introduce some provincial policy. But, you know, there have been some changes. For example, the government has provided for rental zoning right now, right? But it's gonna take us a little while to plug into that and to work. I think one of the challenges is we're a city of 70,000 people, and being part of Greater Vancouver, sometimes our citizens think we can do everything Vancouver can, but they have their own charter. They have a separate law. They can do a lot of things. And I look at them quite enviously sometimes and say, gee, I wish I could do that. But, you know, what I'll say about our council is that to deal with those limitations, you don't need to have fatalism about it. Sometimes you can come up with creative ideas. You can find solutions that are permissible within the act. And so, for example, we have a ban on stratification in New Westminster, which means you cannot stratify an existing rental building. If someone were to just sort of look at the act and say, well, we have limits, we can't control anything about housing in that way, that never would have happened, right? We also have limits on redevelopment of apartments, which, which is a big part of the reason why we haven't had demo-victions in New Westminster. Because we try to reach those kinds of creative solutions. So there is room. But you have to be clever. You have to think, and we have to have some patience to address those issues. And I think that's something that the council does really well, is, is really look at a problem and have some determination to try to find some way to make it better, even with the limitations that we have.
We're, we're not lawmakers in provincial law. We do lobby. But we, uh, we have brought in policy to prevent the lawbreakers. And that's the, uh, the landlord that comes in, has really no intention of doing a major renovation, tells his tenants that they, they have to move out because he's doing a rent eviction, and then ends up just, uh, re-renting that place for sometimes two, three times the rent. So what we've done through our social planning department is we've created policy, and we communicate out to renters as far and wide as we can to ensure them of what their rights are, that there is no rent eviction without a permit in place. So we're trying to mitigate that impact of, uh, some less scrupulous landlords trying to get people out just simply to raise the rents.
Yeah, I mean, our role, the, the most boring word in local government is policy. Uh, but policy matters. I mean, things like not knocking down affordable rental to put up condo buildings, that, that's a policy decision the city made. I think what we do really effectively in New Westminster, we have great staff. We, uh, as a council, we say, look, we've got a problem. We, we need to see what policy triggers we have to fix this problem. And we give our staff the power to come to us with better policy ideas, and then we, you know, we put those into action.
Fantastic. Well, thanks for educating us on that. We are going to move on to speaking specifically to housing in New Westminster. We have three core categories. We want to speak to homeowners, housing-related city infrastructure, and, and renters will be our third segment. So as far as representing homeowners, I wanted to speak first to policy.
I'm not sure I like the way you said that.
Well, policy or planning. So, so what, what comes top of mind for me, and I hear a lot from people in the community, is the, is the OCP, the Official Community Plan. There was a lot of time that went into that, a lot of community consultation. And it, it reached its final decision, uh, however that came to, and I wasn't privy to all of it. I went to a number of the, the different consultations and contributed my thoughts. If you ever look at the record and every time they run a news story on the OCP, that's me and my daughter in the picture. Standing there with Lynn. So I was there once, at least. There's photographic evidence. I, I did, I did give you the heads-up before, before we recorded today. There was an article in the summer that said, should we be revisiting the OCP? Was it a little bit too little, too late? Were, you know, because the market for real estate shifted so drastically during the consultation process? Do you think in your next term, if you were to be re-elected, that there's something you want to do to reshape the OCP?
Um, I think revisit is, is the word I would use. Um, an official community plan is a living document, right? It is, it is something that is always under review and something we're always evaluating. In the OCP, uh, people concentrate, spend most of their energy looking at the land use plan in the official community plan. And the other 200 pages of the OCP don't get as much attention, but that's where the important goals of the city and the vision of the city are. The land use plan is just one thing that's there to support those goals and visions. I think the goals and visions that we spent three years talking with the city are still valid today. But we do need to, we constantly need to be looking back at the land use plan to decide whether those goals and visions are going to be met, um, i- in light of changing economics. And the change economics are always happening.
So for me, who doesn't fully understand, can you change the land use plan on an OCP?
Uh, we, yeah, I, I mean, absolutely. Those are the things that we can, we can revisit when we go forward. I think, um, I think the OCP process was a great process for the city. We put a lot of time into it. We got a ton of public engagement. Was it, did it come out making everybody happy? Of course not. But I think that I feel like we made some good changes. I would like to see us to, I would have liked to see us be a bit more aggressive around townhomes, um, and some small lot development. But not all my colleagues, colleagues would have agreed with that, and the community may not have agreed with that. So I think we, we sort of found a middle ground that we could move forward with, but absolutely, we need to revisit.
With a bit of a harder question then. If you think that townhouse maybe should have been looked at a little more closely, or whatever your language was, was, was good there, Mary.
Yep.
Whereas you're running for reelection, what would you offer that people that you could do, that you will do to address that?
Oh, I, I would actually like to bring that back to the table. I would like us to look at more opportunities for townhomes. I would like us to look, have a conversation around cohousing, uh, lock-off units. Like, there's lots of other things that we can still be, uh, researching, investigating that we didn't in the, in that original, uh, work. It's not, it's, um, when you're talking about land use planning, it doesn't ever stop. It's not like, okay, we did the OCP and now we're finished with that. It's sort of an organic document that moves forward and gets looked at and changed and re-addressed all the time. That's my personal opinion of how we should be using that kind of work.
So, uh, the OCP is, uh, it's mandated by law, but, uh, supposed to be every 10 years. Sometimes it kind of lapses. But the idea of the OCP is to give some stability to, uh, people outside the community or people that want to build in the community. Having said that, um, many of our rezonings, when somebody comes to the city and says, hey, I have a really creative idea that is going to provide some housing in this neighborhood, and the city goes forward with it. Everyone has the right to bring that position to council. They, you can't deny them that. If council approves it, then, uh, the first thing that has to be done, of course, is, is an OCP change. And so this is very common practice. The OCP is sort of your generic, uh, this is the heartbeat of the city for the next 10 years. But, um, we are open to suggestions, and that's how-
Chuck's getting excited. He's heading, hitting the table.
Sorry, guys. It's election season.
So is that, that, that's in form of just a revision to the document? Or just sort of, like, how does it, how do you change it?
It completely opens the OCP for that specific area in question. So if somebody came with a really large area, obviously, you'd have to change the OCP. You couldn't just automatically go there and build it. You would have to go through an OCP amendment. We do it all the time.
Okay. Uh, Jamie, you had something to add?
Yeah, I would invite you and the listeners to be part of the process that follows up from this. Because along with the OCP, we have neighbourhood area plans. And the next neighbourhood area plan to be developed is in Sapperton.
Oh, nice.
Uh, we have a downtown area plan that was adopted before the OCP, and that's where we can really drill down to neighbourhood and even drill down by street and talk about what we really want to see as refinements to that plan. I live in a townhouse. I love townhouses. I think it's a great form of living. And in Greater Vancouver, quite honestly, I, me and my wife could afford a house, but we may never take a vacation again if we do, so.
All three, all three hosts of the show are live in townhouses.
Yeah, we do all live in townhouses, but we consider ourselves the lucky few.
Yes.
Because supply is, is very, very low. Patrick?
I, I love it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that was identified all through the OCP process, is that missing middle housing forum was a, was something that was needed on this side of the river. There's a lot of it, obviously, on the Queensborough part of New Westminster. But on this side of the river, it's something that we need more of. And we are going through that process right now in the city as part of our implementation of the OCP. We are, our staff is looking at the economics of these small townhouse developments and deciding, well, is it even possible right now to build them? The way that the economics of, of land prices in the region has shifted in the last four years, it's okay to put together a plan and say, you know, people should be building townhouses on this block. But if someone, if a builder looks at that and says, I can't make any money building townhouses on this block, or I'm gonna build townhouses, they're gonna cost 1.5 million each, then that's not solving the problem that we're trying to solve. So that's why the OCP, we have to continually be reviewing what, what is possible and what can be built in the cities that we're making sure we're building the right kind of housing.
Well, that makes a lot of sense. I want to speak to the feedback I get as a Realtor working with, with folks. And Jeremy and I are big advocates for New West, and we typically want to work with people who want to work, live in New West. Unfortunately, we often have to completely bypass New West as an option for a lot of families. And the reason being is that we, I just mentioned, townhouse supply is very, very low. And then we speak to, oh, what could be coming in the future, and we show them the land use, uh, map on the OCP. And the majority of that is designated on main arterial streets of New West. Why is it, uh, cause I've been asked this question a lot of times. Why is it that that came through? That, that the townhouse option was not provided in, in family-friendly residential neighborhoods? Where it's like, sure, you can have a townhouse. We'd love you to be a part of our community as long as you live on sixth or eighth or 10th. Why not the main streets? What, or why only the main streets? What happened?
Well, it was tough. Uh, the community told us what they wanted and they wanted that. I would say that, uh, we got a lot of resistance from single-family neighborhoods that did not want to see their neighborhoods change. They appreciate the housing challenges and, and don't forget, when we were having this conversation, it was four years ago and the housing market has changed a lot. But we had to find a place where we could get this work done, but also have the community support it. Do I wish that we had been more aggressive in townhomes in single-family neighborhoods? I do. Will I continue to support that? Absolutely.
So I'm going to go on record because I've been on the show already and said before that I was disappointed, that I, I have faith in all of you that you understand our community and I feel like you didn't take a strong enough leadership role and say, I hear you citizens. You say you don't want this. I know better. It's like being a parent and standing up and your kid says, I hate you. I know better. I'm doing this because I love you. Okay. So what, what, what do we do now?
But well, in the context of a three-year-long community consultation, that's difficult to do. We really, I mean, honestly, people, we, we, we have a responsibility both to the regional growth strategy and to building the housing that we think the new, the city needs. But we also have a responsibility to listen to the residents and understand that we need to balance what people actually, what, what are people who live in this city need. So, um, I do think that the big, at the end of the OCP process, we did have a discussion about townhouses. That was actually the center of the discussion at the final point. And the discussion was, we need to make sure that when townhouses are going to build, they are getting built. And we are, and we, in the implementation, we built in something that said, if we're not getting enough built or it's not happening, we need to revisit this. It's been identified just because the economics are already shifting right at the end of the OCP process.
Okay.
The, the last thing I'd want to do is tell a constituent that I know better and, uh, you know, we did listen. Um, this is the most aggressive, uh, OCP that, um, I've ever seen in the city and even going back into history. This is probably the most aggressive OCP. Um, so I think we have come a long way. Look at other communities that aren't engaging in that, that are literally keeping these large, single-family lots with large, uh, monster homes on them, so our non-contextual homes. So I think we're very aggressive, but this is the beginning. And, uh, you know, Team Cote has identified that there is an issue with council, with the city, with affordability. It's not so much a housing crisis. It's an affordability crisis. And as was said earlier, the more that you develop, uh, in affordable units, uh, the more competitive, competitive the price, uh, point of those is.
I'm going to push back a, a little bit on you on that because.
Here we go.
That's why we're here.
It's, it's, uh, look, you got to lead with the community, not against the community, right? And, and I think the council deserves credit that this isn't a council that simply sits back and tests the winds. It, this is a council that goes out and says what we think, what is a vision, what we think is the best for the city. At the end of the day, we're democratic representatives and it's important that, that we're a group that is willing to go out there with our ideas and make some arguments, but it's also important at the end of the day that we listen. But I'll tell you, with the changes in the OCP, we're already seeing a dramatic increase. We're seeing applications. We're seeing properties bought with the densification around the Skytrain stations and the residential increases in, in the downtown. And don't forget that all of those plan to have townhouses on the ground floors or commercial on the ground floors. There's going to be a dramatic change in housing in New Westminster, more dramatic than you're seeing in any other community as part of a deliberate plan. And, um, you know, there is a survey, single-family homeowners. Guess, guess who likes single-family neighborhoods? Single-family homeowners do. Guess who likes denser neighborhoods? People who live in denser neighborhoods do.
And people that are voting are represented. People actually showing up and with the voice are potentially these people from these detached houses. And we might see a shift in this. We're adding thousands of units, multifamily units, condo buildings. Um, if, if they show up to vote, um, they actually, you know, contact council, contact the city, make these voices heard. Um, we might see that shift as well.
I do want to say that conversation that happened at the council table, uh, was not necessarily all on the same. We weren't all on the same page on this. There was a significant amount of conversation during the workshops, you know, in council. Because we are hearing different things from different parts of the community and we've all brought different opinions about, about how to manage that part of the land use plan. I think that, um, the great thing about this council is we did manage to have some significant disagreements about some of how that land use plan should look. Uh, but we managed to figure out a collaborative, uh, and, and, uh, we managed to agree upon a, a compromise, I guess. Everybody compromised and we agreed on a plan that we could go forward with, recognizing it's a living document and we are going to be able to make changes as we need to to meet those goals of the OCP.
Okay. Well, thank you for your contribution on that. We're going to move along.
Can I add one, one thing?
Fine.
One final thought, um, just because I think it's important and it's something that we deal with as Realtors on a regular basis. Is the high rises with the townhouses attached to them. The struggle that we have is that their maintenance fees are usually astronomical because they're paying for all these common areas and everything. So it's great. Any townhouse is great right now. So if it's attached to a high rise, that's awesome. We need them. But actual, you know, purpose-built townhome complexes, uh, I think it's, it's a better solution.
And row homes. We just do not have any row homes in this.
Big fan of row homes, yeah.
That's just not a common form in Va- in Vancouver in the Lower Mainland at all. And I think it's a really important step, a piece that we're missing in our housing selection outside of the Queensborough area again, where there are good.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to move on, Pat, but tell me, if you are re-elected, what can you do to help bring more row homes?
Again, this is, this is the policy work that staff is doing right now to figure out what the economics are to get these things built. We identified areas where we would, where, where it would be easy for us to approve building them. Um, but we have to understand, uh, within the limits of what we're allowing people to build. Can builders actually make money building these things and can they make these things exist?
Everybody's got to make money. Okay. Um, we're going to move on and we'll, we'll keep this somewhat brief, but it is a question that we heard from a couple of different people as we were gathering questions for the show today. Okay? So, uh, to speak to it briefly, uh, going forward in the future, as you sit in council chambers, if you're to be re-elected, what can you do to hold developers accountable for promises that they make? So some examples that we've heard from our listeners are, for example, in Queensborough, when Aragon developed Port Royal, anybody who walked in the sales center was told and promised of a pedestrian crossing. I know that you knew that was never a guarantee. How do we hold account, developers accountability accountable for making those promises? Same in Victoria Hill. They promised a lot of commercial space. Now those are master-planned communities that were developed over a decade. Okay. So again, those are, those are big examples, but there are small examples. Uh, floor is open to you. Let's keep it quick. Let's hear from you.
You know, um, what promises that a promoter makes is, is something that is outside of our purview. We don't hear about it until after the fact. I hear from people that said, those railways were supposed to be gone in two years. You know, there's four trains running through New West.
You have now.
Yeah, we have heard that. And so.
When are we getting rid of those things?
You know, I, I think there needs to be, uh, you know, I think there needs to be a more ethical approach when people are selling that they, you know, just trying to make the sale and say anything that you can to make that sale. It's unfortunate. I think people should be aware and they should say to the Realtor, put this in writing. Tell me in writing that you are going to promote this and how are you going to put these 10 businesses in here? And how are these railways leaving and why?
Yeah. I mean, uh, that's a good question for the real estate industry. Frankly, I'll push back at you on that one.
I was going to do that.
Yeah.
Bring it, bring it, bring it. Hey, you can go listen to our episode on buying new development. We are not in favor of those sales centers.
There are people, there are people who bought apartments in the Keyside who were told that rail yard is going away within five years.
That's shocking.
There are people right now in, um, the Glenbrook area who are being told there is big developments happening in Glenbrook or Veen. I don't know where these rumors are coming from.
That's crazy.
But I don't know if it's my role as a city councillor is to stop those, to hunt down and stop rumors. It's, it's, it's difficult when no plan comes to city council. All I can talk to is plans that come to me and I haven't seen anything like.
Unless that, that like say Victoria Hill per se was, um, unless that was part of the development application.
Was it part of the rendering that there's commercial space there? No, I'm seeing Chuck shake his head.
There were some commercial spaces, but I didn't think that, that they had the capacity for 10, but, um, they have a capacity for a few. And, uh, from what I hear is they struggle because of the proximity of those commercial spaces.
Right. So, so there's the economics of it, right? But for, uh, the listeners who have asked the question, if they were to have that rendering and suggested all this commercial space was coming and city council approved that rendering and sorry, this may not have been the case. I may not be speaking to the facts, but if that were the case, is there something that you would look to try to do to contribute in the future in your role as councillor to, to hold these developers? If they make a, if there's a rendering, a drawing that says this is coming?
Oh, I, that's a, that's a really tough question because misinformation happens all the time, everywhere for different reasons. Either someone doesn't understand what's being said to them, or they would prefer to hear something different. Or someone is telling somebody something in order to, you know, improve their sales, um, prospects. We do get stories, uh, as councillors from residents all the time that are completely outlandish. Um, and it's very difficult to know how do you track that down? Determine if it is actually true. And then what is the punishment? I'm not sure how, where city council's role is in there. I mean, I suppose all of us know at the city council table that there are developers that we like to work with and there are developers that maybe we're not so happy to work with.
We don't want to name any names, Mary.
Not naming, definitely not naming any names, but you, but you do hear those things and you eventually get tired of those kind of problems following particular businesses. And I'm not sure what other solution there is for city council to shut, um, those kinds of things down. People have to really do their homework and find out exactly what it is, um, that's true or not true in their neighborhood. But it's a, it's a, it's a big problem. I totally hear that.
So on this particular one, uh, Victoria Hill, uh, hypothetically, let's say that, that, let's say that that was in the plan. Uh, 10 commercial spaces and now there's maybe three or four. Once it's passed and it's approved by council, um, there's nothing that binds us to force the builder to build those units. Sometimes the market changes and the builder decides that they're going to pull back. So there are all, there are all sorts of market, but there's nothing in the local government act that gives us an authority to actually mandate the completion of those projects. Sometimes they can just leave a, a hole in the ground. Well, we would make them cover it, but sometimes they literally will not, will not build. And there's nothing that we can force them to actually build what's on that plan.
Yeah. A good example is the retail plan for next to Port Royal in Queensborough. Uh, there is a development there that is planned to bring some retail in the Port Royal area. And, you know, those plans are approved by the city and they're, and they're working through the process, but we can't force the developer to build that building today. You know, they own that piece of land.
You gave, you gave them the approval, the right to do it, but that's their prerogative. They proceed.
Exactly. And I, and, and, you know, we desperately need some retail, just a little bit of quarter retail in that Port Royal neighborhood. It's hard to get it, hard to get them to build.
Just some quick advice for your listeners, um, use a local real estate agent. That's not just a plug for you guys, but the sales, the sales centers are often, people are ma- making sales who don't know the community. Um, the sales centers result in a certain number of sales to people who are not going to be occupants, which is a problem for us. If we approve a high-rise downtown, we imagine it'll be occupied and there'll be people living there and shopping in the area and so on. But a local real estate agent is a person who, who will know the neighborhood, know what plans are for the area, who can tell you realistically what the experience is going to be like if you buy a property. So go local.
And take that rendering.
Good advice, councillor.
Take that rendering with a grain of salt, because it's just a pretty picture. That's they're selling you space, right? Just air for it right now.
It may have even been a preliminary drawing. It didn't actually, doesn't actually reflect the final.
Unless council can hold them to potentially as a solution, uh, you know, the, the part of the planning application is, let's see your marketing materials, the renderings and, and you're only able to advertise what you've approved to us. And if there are revisions for things, it goes through that process, uh, just spitballing, but I know there's a, there's a lot, there's a big process here for getting all those changes, but anyway.
Okay. I have a very personal question I want to ask you guys. It's just, this is my own personal experience with something.
Boxers.
It's not personal to you. It's, it's a very.
Boxer briefs.
No, we are not going there.
I've, I've, I, I told the listeners I was going to keep my personal opinions out of this, but this is my observation as a real estate agent and understanding the zoning bylaws in New West. And I've, I've somewhat warned you that this is a question I have for you. So floor space ratio, density for single detached lots. If the listeners don't understand, every single-family lot has a maximum size house you can build and it's a percentage of the total lot size. What I also noticed is that New West floor space ratio is smaller than most of the surrounding communities. Now that is not what I'm trying to change here. It's typically 50% of lot size for New West. Uh, that is if that house is built partly below ground or above. It's the same regardless. My thought is I saw a beautiful brand new house come up a couple of years ago in one of our single-family neighborhoods and the exterior looked a perfect fit for the neighborhood. The house obviously is not too big. That's the objective. But I thought to myself, here's a brand new house, tasteful, all the rest of it. It should have an eight-foot dugout basement with a suite underneath. That doesn't change the aesthetic to the community at all to me. I think it's a very reasonable solution. Visually it's fine. We're adding that suite. I mean, they had the option to put a suite in anyway. Um, but then they would have exceeded their floor space ratio. So, um, now I did share my feedback with, uh, the, the mayor at the time, Mr. Cote, and he said, well, the bylaws are as such is what they are. So my question to you as an individual, as a resident is, is that something you would entertain as, as revising the bylaws to allow something like that where the aesthetic is maintained in the community, but we can increase the option for the size of the house?
I've actually brought this up at council because, um, in one of the most strictly regulated cities in the world, in London, in central London, it has very strict height limits, um, very low height limits, but they allow underground. They've decided to allow underground and I read about one property that believe it or not, had 12 levels underground.
Whoa.
But the, and, and it was not an apartment building. It was someone who was quite well off and had a car collection and all kinds of things. But the experience from the street was still an experience of a nice house, a nice neighborhood, a visible skyline and all those kinds of.
Okay. I'm going to cut you off. You get it. Are you going to advocate for this?
I've already started advocating for it. And the other thing to talk about is usable floor space. If you can own a nice heritage home, you don't want to destroy the heritage home, but you've got sloping attic walls that limit the use of your house. We need to talk about usable floor space as well.
Yes, in the context of housing diversity. I mean, I don't want, I don't want us just to, uh, just blanket increase FSR so that houses get bigger and bigger. I think that the most, the biggest pressing issue in our city is housing diversity, having a different variety of sizes of housing. So I am, I am comfortable with, uh, looking at FSR if it includes secondary suites, if it includes laneway houses, if it includes, uh, um, duplexes, uh, triplexes and that type of housing diversity increases. And ultimately this is what we're going to have to do if we're going to want to get row hoses and town hoses to build.
Um, absolutely. I completely agree. I think that that is the, the direction that the city needs to go. I think, um, the place where we can start affecting, affecting some change there is with staff and to make sure that staff understands that they can bring that kind of stuff to us or that they can advocate with the applicant that council is likely to consider this. Let's work it, work on something different. And I think sometimes if staff feel that there's a lot of limitations, um, that they're quite boxed in, they don't bring that forward. And I think it's our role as councillors to make sure that staff know that we are open to that kind of work.
Well, FSR is a significant, uh, change. It's not just, um, you know, uh, something that can be triggered. It, it's a major change. Uh, to change in FSR, you can only change into an upper zoning. We had a house in Queensborough that had added on 1,100 square feet. Well, the only zoning they could go into to not have to tear down their addition was a hotel zoning. So they ended up having to tear it down. So, um, FSR is a very important issue. It changes because of topography in New Westminster. There are some basement suites that have 12-foot high ceilings depending on, uh, the topography. So, um, it is, it is a challenge. I agree with councillor Johnstone, um, you know, laneway housing to look at, uh, FSR on that and to look at, uh, FSR for, uh, secondary suites or, or at least additional rental properties.
And I, and I want to add, there is complexity to FSR. I mean, we have to consider several other things. Lot coverage, because lot coverage impacts how the city plans the drainage of the city. If you have all your lot covered, we have to build our sewers bigger to accommodate drainage. Uh, tree cover, um, green space cover. We, so, so FSR can exist within, within this context, but, but you need to think about all the, having a tree bylaw to me was one of the most important changes the city made in order to allow us to increase FSR and building, and building flexibility on lots while not losing that green space.
Okay. I want to drill down on this then as an election item. So what can you do in the next term? You're, you're, you're agreeing with me that we want to look for options to do this, but Jamie makes the point. Digging down doesn't affect the street facade. Changing the FSR, I understand Chuck, is incredibly complicated, but you have, you have a four-year term ahead of you. Do you want to try to open up something to, to actually change the zoning bylaws? Where you can say, it's, it's, it's like the west end of New West has a different zoning bylaw where you have to have your second level is 80% of your first. And the, the intent behind that was that you, you couldn't build an ugly box.
Big, big box.
Right? So why aren't we doing something like that for the rest of the community that says you can build underground? You can build your portion above and your portion below.
So that is baked into the implementation of the OCP. So when I talked earlier about, um, our staff are doing economic analysis of different housing types and how they can actually be built and what's actually practical, that is baked right into that. It, part of that discussion is how can we adjust FSR or do we have to adjust FSR in order to allow laneway houses or duplexes or triplexes or these other forms? That is an ongoing process that is happening in the city.
Okay. I do need to kind of close the issue, but I'm going to just push back a little bit. I liked the concept of laneway housing. I also like the concept of having a yard. And if you can build a tasteful house on the outside with a very suitable suite below and you still have a yard, which apparently reduces lot coverage and helps with drainage and maintaining trees, councillor Johnstone, that to me is a better fit. I, I actually don't love the concept of covering a single-family lot. I, I actually don't love the concept of covering a single family lot with structures. I'd rather see it done tastefully with, with space below ground. But I understand it's outside the limit of what we can do today.
Can I just say something? The thing is, is you already can, you can, you can build a complete suite downstairs and a house on top and a laneway.
I understand that, but you still have to fit within today's current 50% FSR. What I'm saying is 50% above ground or 45% above ground. It's still a very suitable sized house for the lot. And then you allow them to also put that suite below.
As long as it's not detracting from the neighborhood.
Precisely. Right? And I'd rather see that than a 45% FSR house on the lot plus a laneway house and garage behind. And then plus, and, and that being it, I, I just, I'd rather see it underneath. I mean, I'm, I'm getting very personal on this, but you're saying that you're looking for options. And I am, I'm wondering with the reelection, what you would actually, you're saying you hear this and you understand the need. What can you actually do during your next four years?
We have to direct staff to bring that back to us, to go and do the work and bring us back options that we can either approve or not approve. But we've had these conversations. The conversation is, as Patrick said, is in the works, but we have to be more directive and say, we want to hear back on what are these options around FSR.
So if somebody was, had an application to build on their property, you're saying it's not as black and white? If, if they do get sort of stonewalled, that's, you know, part of the application process. Does, I mean, does it have to, is that, so it has to go to public hearing or is it something that you can actually?
We're talking variance.
FSR you can't unless you actually change the entire zoning. There has to be a zoning on the shelf that fits that FSR. And you bring up some good points. I mean, some people may, maybe we can have staff say, look at, this person doesn't want to do a laneway house, but wants that same density of the laneway house. What can we do to, to accommodate that? It might be odd because you might have a house structure and then an underground part that actually extends beyond the house. But you know what? That doesn't mean it's not doable, right? Jamie, 12 stories underground, we can do a story and a half maybe. So no, that's an interesting point and I think we should have a look at that.
All right. I appreciate your feedback on addressing a lot around development planning. Let's try to sort of get through this housing related infrastructure. Questions we've received from our listeners are related to that. As we talk about increasing density and population and building a lot of new structures, people worry about the new towers on the key and how all the vehicles are going to get in and out and park. And what does that mean? What does that mean for sewer systems? Patrick, you mentioned that with single family lots with drainage. And again, uptown, we're talking about development, people worry about that. So let's talk about as we add a lot of housing, how does the city manage its infrastructure? Especially because we do have very, very old systems, being a very old city.
When you talk about housing on the key, at one time there were 13 towers going up on the key. The city purchased the one project Westminster Pier, eliminated all those towers, built Pier Park. And the second is the Larko site that had, I believe, another seven going in there and literally weren't delaying. We actually downzoned them and we were expecting to go to court and we were expecting to be sued because they gave us a huge amenity for that density before I was on council. And so now we have two towers there. So we've done some creative stuff by taking away some of that density. But we've also created a shortage of some of the housing that was going to be provided by that density. And so that's another reason to look at other areas to put that housing.
Patrick?
The official community plan, ultimately that's its goal. The official community plan puts the city's growth into contexts, the regional growth into the context of our city. So that sort of directs staff about what the city is going to look like 20 years down the road. So we were assured that we're building the right infrastructure to accommodate the growth in the areas where we're growing it. That ultimately is one of the goals of the official community plan. Making growth predictable so that we can build the infrastructure we need to accommodate that growth. When it comes to traffic and car ownership, especially downtown, you know, downtown car ownership is down to like 0.7 vehicles per suite. Building density on Skytrain lines is not just the city's plan, it is the regional plan and it is working. The only way we can address growing population in the region, well, there's two ways we can do it. We can build freeways, which will increasingly de-pack the traffic, or we could give people the alternative to live.
Sure. So we're addressing the concern. The concern is, is a lot of vehicle traffic trying to get in and out of Keyside Drive. And so this isn't necessarily my view, it's just what I hear from a lot of people, right? So do you have a specific response to that? I guess part of it you're saying is there will be fewer cars than maybe people expect? Is that what you're saying?
I think that the growth that's happening down there will result, it will have less vehicles than people expect. Because, and that, that's not just speculation, that is what we are seeing right now downtown.
We see that too in some of the buildings actually around the Skytrain stations. It's the, the cost for a parking space is actually lower if you, someone wants to rent one in their building.
New Westminster leads the region in alternative mode share. We are, no other city in the lower mainland uses transit as much as New Westminster residents do. We have the lowest car ownership per capita of any city in the lower mainland.
So specifically then to this concern of the towers coming in on the key and there's only a few sort of routes in and out of the key across the tracks there. Are we saying that we don't think there's going to be too many cars? Or that you've got a plan that you're planning that's in place through the, the approval of this construction will accommodate your projections?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think the construction that's going on right now is causing more impact than actually the result of after, of what will be there after the construction. The intersection at Begbie will be reconfigured as that development happens. So that's going to help the flow on that side.
Okay.
We are also doing improvements on the Kinness overpass, but more importantly, we're creating better pedestrian connections across. And that's going to help move people.
So going forward then in your next term, if you were to be reelected, Jamie, and people have this question around, are you addressing infrastructure concerns with new housing development? Do you, do you think that something needs to be done differently? Or are you telling the constituents that you are taking this into account when you look at development applications?
We are taking it into account. One of the things our council did was increase development cost charges, not necessarily a popular position in your business, but, but to really look at it, we had the second lowest development cost charges in the entire lower mainland. In a rapidly growing city with lots of development, that just didn't make sense, right? We're now at the middle, we raised it, but we only raised it to the middle of the pack. So we also created a community amenities program, which didn't exist at all before it. I remember being an upset resident when a new tower went in on Royal Avenue and the community amenity was a bench on the sidewalk. But the bench was put on 10th Street, so the bench ran down the hill just like the hill did. And it was, it was unusable. So they built a platform for the bench and then people were falling off the platform because the bench was on a hill. So, so those are really significant changes we've made for the community to try to benefit. But I'll be honest, if I had one wish, the wish I would have is that approvals don't last forever. It, it is painful when you're a councillor and something was approved 20 or 30 years ago and you think it was a mistake and you have to deal with it today. But in terms of traffic, look, I took a tour of some of the buildings that were built on the Skytrain. One of them has parking lots that are almost empty in that building at any time of day. So the strategy of the densification around the Skytrain stations is actually making a real difference. And you know, it's not as if though, if there are 50 more cars in the community, that those communities are all going to go on one street at the exact same time of the day and they'll sit there and block everybody. But, but the reality is we're doing a heck of a lot of work, making this community as transportation diverse as possible. And.
Can I, is it okay if I jump in? Cause I, I'm sorry, I do have to run off.
We're going to lose Mary here.
It's one of my, the challenges of being on councils, I also work, so I have to run off to work. But I just want to, last comment for me is Keyside. So I have spent a couple of days in the last two weeks doing some door knocking and walking along the boardwalk. And you're right, traffic is what I've heard from most people. And the traffic is not great now. And I think the challenge is, is that people are really worried about what's going to happen when those buildings are in place. So there, there, it's more of this anticipation of problems. And I, I think unfortunately they haven't seen some of the new intersections that will be created, some of the new traffic patterns that will be created. I think that, I understand the angst that they have around it, but we haven't finished the job. And I think the other role of council is that we need to keep checking in. Like what, in six months or in a year after those buildings are up and people are in them, what does it look like? What's happening down there? So it's not, it's not something we can solve today. It's something that we've done a lot of planning for. We need to figure out what it's going to look like when it actually is in place. Is it true that there will be less cars in some of those buildings? I believe so, but we have to get there. So I appreciate people's concerns, but I think they need to know that we have done a lot of planning around traffic. And I very quickly want to thank you for inviting us to be here. I really appreciate this conversation. I think you have a lot to add to the conversation and, and it would be great if you gave us more input throughout the term.
Well, that's very much appreciated. Mary, thanks for joining us today. You do get your last word before you depart. So if there's anything else, any, well, that's your last word on housing infrastructure. We did have our other category of renters, but I think we did speak to that mostly as we opened the show today. So I think you've had an opportunity to share your thoughts on that. But anything else that you thought maybe we've got the listeners listening right now? Is there anything else you want them to know about your, your prospects for reelection here?
What I want them to do is go out and vote. I think that it's really important that people have this, have a say. Try to figure out who to vote for, educate yourself, ask your friends, look at the paper, whatever is required. But get out there and ha, have your say, make sure that your vote counts because we don't get enough people out. And it's really important that the community engages with this process. So really that's all I, I would add at this point.
Great. Well, thank you, Mary. And in our, our show, we always have show notes and we will link to whatever feedback channel you choose, where if people want to follow up with you and communicate with you, they'll be able to read.
Yeah. I have a website that people can go and have a look at too.
Awesome. We'll put that in our show notes so people can find that there and get ahold of you if they'd like to. So again, thanks for joining us. So again, a big thank you to Mary. We're happy to get her out on time to get off to her, her job. Speaking to infrastructure related to housing development, we haven't heard from Chuck yet.
Thanks. You know, there was a time where, you know, we demanded significantly more parking for development, which adds a huge cost to those development and creates a, an issue with affordability. We did some analysis and found out in those underground parkades, you could roll a bowling ball down there and not hit a car, which tells you that people living in proximity of a good transit system will use that transit system. We've now modeled that all around the Skytrain stations. And that's the same model we're using for the new project down on the waterfront. And remember, we're going from seven towers to two. So there will actually be fewer vehicles or fewer people living down there. When it comes to amenities, you know, when I first got on council and they were building this tower over the Skytrain station, I go, where's the amenity? And the planner that's no longer with us anymore said, the development's the amenity. And so I said, you know what? Then don't develop it. Let's wait until there is a desire to build in our city. And then let's make sure that we maximize what's returned to the people of the city. We do that now and we're in a market that is really developing. We're getting good amenities and good public art for the city.
We, sorry Derek.
One, I had one question about, you said sort of geographically near Skytrain stations. Do you get, is there, is there a formal sort of limit to that? Like for example, there's a development application for the end of Keyside Drive. Would that be within that border where you'd say less, you don't need a parking space for every unit?
Yes, absolutely. And another thing too, is that the two developments are having, are providing access to Skytrain. The one that's being built right now by Boza has an actual direct crossing that will allow people to get right over onto the Skytrain. So making it easy for people to take transit, people will take transit.
Parking is always a negotiation in these buildings. There are, there are standards for the amount of building that we, that are, that we need to build, built into our zoning bylaws. But every, every discussion about it, if they provide space for car share, we can take some of the parking away. If they are close to the frequent transit network or next to a Skytrain station, we can reduce the amount of parking need they have. But everyone is a negotiation and developers, developers have a negotiation for themselves. They have to decide how much parking they need to market their building. But they also recognize that it costs $30,000 or $40,000 per underground parking space. And so their costs get significant, especially the deeper they go. So it's always a negotiation. We've had some discussions towards the end of this council term. We've been having more discussions about whether we've got the balance right, especially next to Skytrain stations, where we may actually, in my opinion, I think we're building too much parking near Skytrain stations right now. I think we're overbuilding it.
Okay. So speaking to future infrastructure development, I learned something new this year. I was speaking with Mayor Cote and he educated me on the fact that as you're moving around, I'm moving away from all of the condo development. Now that is what most people typically want to speak to because as density tends, people have, feel it has a bigger impact on, on their life. But in all the single family areas, there also is infrastructure development that goes or infrastructure improvement with development of new homes. And I've noticed that if people don't know, our listeners, New West having very old infrastructure has a combined storm and sewer system. And that is not very modern. And my understanding is with any new construction, there, we're, we're moving away from that. Can you speak to what that future looks like? Or again, we're speaking to reelection. Do you have an idea of how things should be improved or changed if you were to be reelected?
I think the people in Lower Sapperton right now recognize, recognize what sewer separation looks like. There are several cities in the lower mainland, North Vancouver, Burnaby, some areas of Burnaby, parts of Vancouver that have, still have combined flow sewer. There is a long-term plan to pay for fixing that, for separating our storm sewer from our sanitary sewer. And in the long term, it will save us money. But it is a expensive project, both for the city and for homeowners. So we are, we are being realistic about, about the timeline to do that. When new buildings are built, they must be built to accommodate separated sewer systems. So that way we do the work, or even if we have done the work, they can hook into the new system effectively. This, the, one of the successes we had in this term was we managed to get grants from the federal government. So all that work that's going on in Sapperton, the federal government paid for half of that. So we managed to reduce sewer costs, the cost of doing that separation. Unfortunately, it meant we had to do it a little quicker than we would have liked to, which meant that it caused a little more disruption to the neighborhood. But ultimately we saved the city about $5 million in money by getting that grant and that was significant.
Yeah. So that speaks to a question from one of our listeners though, that I, I anticipate when you're saying all this is happening, that it's designed to accommodate the massive increase of density in, in Sapperton.
Well, it should be noted that it was the federal government, it was new environmental legislation that mandated all local governments in this area to, to do a sewer separation within the, the run of the Fraser River and the tributaries. So this is a federal government mandate. We have a timeline that we have to accomplish it by. Fortunately, we have been able to get some funding. What happened in the past was that when we had heavy rains, the gates on the Fraser River would open and the sewer and the rain would flow into the river. So it is a serious issue. We do have to deal with it, but it is a federal mandate and all local governments have to put out money to separate sewers.
And looking to the future, and even, even looking to our council to change from the past, we need to do the quality of life infrastructure as the population grows too. You know, the Westminster Pier Park was not something that was going to happen. That was recent councils that decided to return the waterfront to the people. The, the walkways around Queensborough and the additional parkland in Queensborough, the renovations to the library, to community centers, that kind of infrastructure that we want people to move to New West, to have the quality of life experience and the appreciation of the city that people who live here now have. And that kind of infrastructure is a very important part of this piece. So even, even when we have the additional development on the key, for example, it was our council that said, that's got to include some parkland, that's got to include some childcare, that's got to include some roadway. So that kind of quality of life infrastructure has to happen with every project and every step of the way.
Somehow you missed the most important piece of, the biggest piece of infrastructure we're planning to build in this city, which is the Canadian.
I was going to hold you off on the big tease there. So you go ahead.
CGP. Can we, just before that, talking about Pier Park for a second? And I might just be behind because I haven't researched it lately, but I know the plan was really to connect the Sapperton Park, riverfront parks to the Pier Parks. Where, are you guys able to touch on where we're at with that timeline wise?
Yes. And you know, there are some roadblocks, there are some waterfront lots that we do, do not own. We were approached a few years ago to, to purchase a block of lots. We couldn't come to any terms. So what we did was we purchased the center one to try to weaken the value of the other lots.
That is effective.
This is, that was my idea. This is water, this is, this is waterfront lots that literally have virtually no land. There's a railway there. So we, we are doing the connection. We, we, some of the areas, we, we have to put a float in so that, you know, cyclists and pedestrians will actually have to go onto the river to be able to get to Sapperton Park. But that is our goal is to make that connection, which will connect right to the TransCanada Trail as well.
For, for the benefit, Pat will come back to you in a second. Chuck, let's just close that one for the benefit of our voters. Can you do that in your next term? You said it is our goal.
I can talk the timelines on that.
Oh, Pat's going to be timeline guy. So, so, so we're talking about individual candidates here to be voted. So if, if Pat answers this question and says, can we do it in four years? Chuck, are you going to put yourself in the same bag with him?
Oh no, absolutely. I think we can, but I'll let Pat answer.
So there's two parts to that question. One part is the, there, there is the land part that we can build. We can build that in the next four years. The floating part, which is required because we can't be within 15 meters of an active rail line. So we actually have to go into the Chuck in order to make it go by. Sorry, not Chuck.
Leave me out of this.
We have to go to the water and make that work. We have a model, there is a, there is a walkway very similar to this on the Willamette River just in Portland. It's a very good model. It works great. The problem is where we want to put it is where the Petulla Bridge is going to be replaced. So our timeline will be impacted by the Petulla Bridge production, construction project. We simply cannot build this until Petulla Bridges got their piers in the river and are done that work. I do not think that will be done in the first, in this four years. We can, we can put the money in place. Uh, we can, we can uh put the money in place, we can put the funding in place, we can put the plan in place. But I cannot guarantee you that we'll be able to put the, the piece in place because of just the uncertainty of the bridge project.
Good question, Jer.
My constituents ask.
Uh, that's cool. Um, we're gonna talk about something that no one cares about in New West. Maybe briefly, uh, as councillors over the next four years. Um, talk about truck traffic moving through New West is very contentious, very, very contentious. Big container trucks moving through residential areas. I first want the listeners to understand what is actually within the authority of s- of city council to affect that.
Yeah, and, and you know, what's really important to note is that um, city owns its own roads, but we've divested some of those roads to the major uh road network. And once you give those roads up, Front Street is uh probably a recent one in the last decade. Uh, once you give that up as a regional road network, you can't just pull it back again and say, no more trucks. Um, trucks do have to move, goods do have to move. Um, we are working with the province to try to get some uh, some alleviate alleviate some of the impacts in uh Sapperton. And there's some areas in Queensborough that we think that they can actually eliminate the trucks from. But uh, pretty well, the major road network is the major road network. And unless we can get agreement from Translink and the provincial government, it's very difficult to uh, to say no more trucks.
And so speaking towards that, we are having those conversations, especially related to access to the Petulla Bridge. Um, we've been active on this, but we don't control how many truck routes there are through the city. You asked a question earlier, what can we not do? That's one of the things and uh, you know, the, the new government is still relatively a new government and those conversations are early. Under the previous government, we formally requested to reduce the number of truck routes through the city. After all, New Westminster is a mile and a half wide at its widest. How many truck routes are really needed that will go through the entire city? Um, and we were turned down flat. And in fact, the B C Truckers Association actually said in public, we don't know what New Westminster is asking for, but we're against it. Whatever it is they're going to ask for, uh, because they had no limitations at all position and no negotiation. So we're having those discussions and obviously waterworks, road construction, all of these things has impacted the community recently in terms of trucks having to divert their routes, but but uh, you know, we're, we're on board in, in trying to address this issue. And one of the most effective things we did was create the Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Unit, which has done great work in making sure.
I love seeing them on Royal Avenue. Set up shop there. It's just like picking fish out of barrel, man.
And they, you know.
Coming through anymore, most of those.
There have been so many trucks pulled off the road, ordered to make repairs, stopped on the spot.
Um, that was clever.
We are seeing improvement because now we're getting a rep.
Okay, so, so this is a housing related conversation. And, and the reason why I bring up trucks is because they affect people in their residential neighborhood.
Well, there's a regional planning discussion about this too. Um, I mean, the majority of the trucks who move through our city are port servicing trucks. Um, they, and uh, on, it, it changed when the tolls on the bridges changed. It changes with how the port distributes their land and where their multimodal stations are. The port has never invested significantly in short sea shipping to move containers up and down the river between the multimodal yards. Uh, and there are, there is some regional planning work we need to do to, to, to deal with truck traffic, not just because this is not something that's unique to New Westminster. This is something that happens in in Poco's neighborhoods and North Vancouver's neighborhoods. It's something that happens everywhere.
Okay, of course. Is there anything you want to add to the conversation around truck traffic, how it impacts New West residents before we move on?
Um, you know, with uh, with the agreements on the new Petulla Bridge and the alignments, I think it will make a little smoother movement of that. It might avoid fewer trucks, you know, uh, trying to rat run through New Westminster. And that, I think the biggest win was uh, the tolls coming off the Pet- Tallo Bridge. But having said that, it's a massive detour to go South Fraser Perimeter Road to Coquitlam when it's like a five kilometer ride through New West. So there was a huge infrastructure mistake made by a previous government that is hurting us to this day.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if the improvements of the on and off ramps of the Petulla Bridge will help a little bit.
Certainly looks like it in the design plan.
Um, but also I recognize this summer or this summer and last both, we had road projects going on on Front Street.
Yeah.
Uh, this, the project that happened this year was not something the city could control. It was a regional sewer system uh upgrade being done by Metro Vancouver. And that really impacted our neighborhoods because as soon as you create a, our, our system is so um, sensitive to a, an interruption like that, that really, we, we know people felt that. We were hearing a lot.
We're selling two places on Royal right now. We're just seeing them lined up from everywhere.
Yeah, it's certainly, it's a big conversation. So I appreciate your input on that. Uh, our, our last uh core category to talk about is housing related for renters. I, I will say though, at the beginning of our show today, we did speak to it. Uh, you shared your ideas on how we've increased rental stock and all the rest of it. So I'm not going to ask any questions to this. I think we had a chance to address what our, our listeners' concerns were with relation to either our rental evictions or um, trying to suppress the cost of rental housing. Um, but I will leave it to you as an open floor uh to speak to the listeners and tell them what in the, in the next term you would do uh, to address the, the difficulties for renters in New Westminster.
Well, I think that the advocacy work we're doing on rent evictions is really important. We have a provincial government that's promised action on rent evictions. Uh, they took some preliminary steps that are small. The, the Renters Council that's been formed by the province, the Renters Task Force is, is reporting out and reporting out recommendations. And the role that cities play and the role that New Westminster plays, because we're looked to by other municipalities, we have almost half our population as renters and people know that. And the role that we play in the Union of B C Municipalities, meeting with cabinet, including our own cabinet minister, Judy Darcy, right here in the community, that's going to be a huge role. And we have a role to help government understand the impact of rent evictions on people. Um, the other issue of levels of rent and those sorts of things, you know, the, the province controls all of those issues, but we can still be an advocate. What we can do locally is we can start to use the rental zoning provisions. And we can start to use carrot and stick tactics um, that, that are becoming permissible under the new government to try to try to do the best we can by, by renters in a, a pretty difficult situation. But as a municipal government, we can still be proactive and we still have some options that are new options that we can pursue in the coming term.
Right.
Yeah, I, I did not come onto this council as an affordable housing advocate. That was not my area, you know, that was not the area that I advocated around.
Certainly, every, every council member has sort of more of their specific niche, but you do have to vote on housing.
No, no, and but, and it has been an incredible education for me, serving on this council. And I'm really proud of the work this council and the councils before us did. New Westminster is a regional leader on affordable housing. Other cities look to New Westminster to find out what we're doing and how we're managing to protect our affordable rental stock. How we're getting uh developers to build new rental stock. We, we've done a lot of good work for decades on this while and I, I'm not one to blame others for our problems, but uh, but in two decades, when we had a provincial government who was not interested in affordable housing policy, they simply were not interested in doing anything to help. We had two decades where there was no supportive housing built in this province. And that is that, that is a huge problem. And that is why we are part of where we are. So on the market side, the city's done a lot. We've got more rental being built.
Let's talk about the future.
Housing. Right, we've done that. Uh, in the future, right now, we do have the option right now. This is new to do rental only zoning. We can also do some inclusionary zoning where, where we can actually create zoning where some portion of the new developments are have to have affordable housing components to them. Those are new levers that have been given by the provincial government. We can make the most of those. Um, ultimately, we need to open the door for because the market's not going to solve this problem. There is not, the market will not solve the affordable housing problem. We need the provincial government to get back into building supportive housing, uh, affordable housing. And we need to, as a city, open the door and make sure that we are uh, grabbing every opportunity the province is giving us to build supported affordable housing.
Um, six point five billion dollars has been promised by this current government for housing. And I think this is a very important step. You make a good point, councillor uh, Johnstone. Um, we can't solve the problem of affordability on purchasing housing, but we can uh, working with the governments and making sure that we fast track these uh projects and working with nonprofits that are putting in a combination of middle class, uh, low income, um, disabled income. Uh, those models are available. There are a couple of societies in New Westminster, one that I work with, that are looking at uh, developing such a model in New Westminster. I think the more people we can get into housing, um, the more comfortable the market will become and the market will reflect that. We need people to have capital income after they pay their shelter. We need them to be able to contribute to the, to the economy. Uh, exorbitant rents are not the way. The last thing I want to say on this is that one of the first things we did was meet with minister uh, with the min- housing minister on the fact that people were building rentals in New Westminster. They were leasing it for two years at a certain rent to fill the buildings. When that two years was up, the sky was the limit. And uh, we had to close that loophole in the Rental Tendency Act. We asked the minister to help us do that. The minister did the, do that. And now we have, that is no longer existent. People were actually capitalizing their buildings, paying for a building and waiting for two or three years, raising the rents, recapitalizing the building and putting money in their pocket. That's not good for the community.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a, a question that I wish I didn't have to ask, but it comes up in virtually every social forum that talks about rental housing and the, the skyrocketing costs. And so it's put to, to councillors often say, well, reelection, this is what you should do. And that is rent control. I don't want to spend a lot of time speaking to it. Yes or no? Can you affect anything with actual rent control?
We don't have the legal authority to do that as a local government.
Understood.
We, so the issue there is what we advocate for. And it's important to understand the four and a half percent rent increase is under the old rules uh, of the previous government. I think the new government could have been quicker in changing that formula, but I, I have some confidence that they will. But I want to say frankly, as a, as an owner, town homeowner, if my mortgage suddenly increased by four point five percent, I would find that a, a financial challenge. And I thi- I think that we need that kind of compassion and thinking in our society that your average, your average renter is not someone who's seeing a four and a half percent increase in wages every year. And, and we play a big role as a city in advocating for those needs.
And unfortunately, um, again, we can't expect the market to provide this housing. We need to get back into what we did in the sixties and seventies and eighties in this country, which is build housing for people who can't afford to get into the market. So people have a safe place, a safe, affordable place to live. And senior governments need to bring the money in order to make those things happen. And we as local governments need to make sure when that money arrives, we have places for them to build and we are ready to get them built.
Yes, and uh, the other thing that local governments can do is provide land for housing. We've just done that on Hastings Street. We've uh uh, tendered it and a nonprofit has picked it up and they're now go- going to put actual families in those units. And so working with uh your land base and permitting some of that creative housing is something that all local governments can do.
Wonderful. So thanks for your contribution on these, these core subjects around housing in New West. We want to give you the opportunity, as we did, Mary, uh, to say anything in closing that you think maybe you didn't have an opportunity to say today that you would like the citizens of New West to hear as you uh, run for reelection here. Jamie, we'll start with you.
Um, one of your questions earlier was about it, about our individual lives. I ran a project called the Hospitality Project at the New Westminster Food Bank for about ten years. And one of our projects was homelessness prevention. So we dealt with about seventy people a year who were about to become homeless and they would come to us and we would intervene successfully to make sure that didn't happen. Um, that used to be a few people a year. And that program grew to about seventy people a year. People being evicted, people, the most common cause was rent was going up and they didn't have the means to cover the increase. So, you know, there is a real housing crisis out there. And it fundamentally starts at that level, but it also shoots right through the entire system where we just don't have the kind of homeowner mobility that we used to have. Um, you know, people like me aren't planning on buying a house after my townhouse. I'm not planning on buying a larger house after that house. Um, so that kind of, that kind of mobility that people uh, that's been a big part of our real estate market in past decades is also really being challenged. But people still have some desire to be able to make choices in life. So that that spectrum of housing is also a big part of this. And no offense to anyone out there, but uh, it might help when we take uh, you know, specu- speculation and money laundering out of the market more as the government's trying to do. But we need some mobility. We need people to want to be customers again. And we need people to have opportunities around housing. And that means really diversifying the types of housing in the housing market from the old system where everyone was going to have a large yard and a two-story home with a basement. So.
Right. Cool. Well, tha- thank you, Jamie. Uh, Chuck, your closing comments?
Thank you very much and thanks to all the listeners. Uh, and thanks for putting this on. This is a, an incredible venue. I just want to say that as someone that was first elected in nineteen ninety-six and other than a year and a half, I've been out of politics uh, due to a, an illness. Um, this has been a council, this has been the most productive council that I have uh, ever sat on. And, and the reason is, is people have diverse opinions, but they respect each other. There's not that gotcha moment or somebody trying to set you up or somebody trying to railroad your ideas. And some of the ideas that have come out of that, that I don't think would have happened if there was an adverse government is the the dark fiber, we're leaders of dark fiber, leaders in British Columbia and, and dark fiber, uh, big industries, uh, tech industries are moving in here and we're diversifying. Open government, we just won an award, first place in Canada, an organization that monitors federal, provincial and local governments, number one. Bill Harper uh, received the award on our behalf. We're a smart twenty-one city. Uh, we're out of four hundred cities in the world. We hit the top twenty-one of, from what we do technically. I want this to continue and uh, I'm proudly running with Jonathan Cote, Patrick Johnson, Jamie, uh, Mary Trentido. And we have two new candidates, Chinu Das and Nadine, Nadine, Nadine Nakagawa, who we said that we would bring them in to share resources with. I think we need to continue this strength. I don't want to risk all of this right now. So I ask all of you vote for the candidates that are currently on council, vote for Nadine Nakagawa and for Chinu Das, and let's keep this momentum going.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chuck. Now, Pat, I will give you your closing comments, but I interrupted you earlier. We're having a little fun and you're saying the most important piece of infrastructure in New West is Canada Games Pool. I'll let you finish your thought.
Oh, I just, I, I, he was listing off all the things that we are building in the city to support a growing population. I just, I thought it was funny that he was missing the, the what is probably going to be the most expensive piece of infrastructure the city has ever built. Uh, I'm on the task force that's looking at the plans that pool. It is going to be a really great community center, not just a pool. It's, and, and I think that it's a, it's something to look forward to, but it's also something that we have to be vigilant about. It's a difficult building market right now. Um, it's uh, there's, we, we are in a good position to get some federal grants to help us pay for that facility. Um, I think that it's a really exciting project for the community. So.
Cool. I'm not going to hit you with any deep uh, CGP.
You don't have any questions? Is it still called CGP?
I don't know. I don't think we'll call it the Canada Games Pool again. We can have a discussion, a discussion about the.
Cool. Uh, any closing comments then? Thanks for joining us, Pat.
Um, yeah, thank you for doing this. It's, it's fun. I can't wait to hear this podcast. I know how goofy I sound on the radio, so it should be interesting.
Sound like this all the time. We all do, unfortunately, when you hear yourself through headphones. You go, is that really what I'm sounding?
You get used to it.
Yeah, I want to say I am, I am really proud of the work we've done. I think as, to repeat some of Chuck's uh, comments, I think that we are an interesting council of people. I think Chuck and I have managed to disagree on some pretty significant issues in the city, but
No way.
But uh, I think that some of the uh, some of the discussions we have, I mean, that the most important part of this council is Chuck and I can disagree on an issue. We can move on to the next issue and we, and that's that's the pass and we can work together on the next issue. There is a positive collaborative teamwork attitude on that council right now and about how much we may agree or disagree on something. And that has been really effective at allowing us to get a lot of these policies moved forward. Um, so I am, I'm very proud to be running with the mayor. Mayor Cote, I think, is the right mayor for the time in New Westminster. He really understands urban systems. He understands what a growing city needs. And I'm really proud to work with him and to be on team Cote. Uh, for myself, um, it's been an incredible learning experience. It's been really rewarding to talk to people and to, and to take part in this job. Um, my personally, I'm all about transparency. I have been blogging at PatrickJohnStone.ca every council meeting that we've had. After every council meeting, I write a report and say, here's the decisions we've made in plain language, hoping to open up that process and that people understand better what actually happens in City Hall. Uh, and I, I think that just through that kind of open communication, uh, if people understand better how the city works, they can make better decisions. Uh, and they can help us make better decisions. So um, yeah, I'm hoping to uh, I'm hoping to be on for a second term and uh, thank you for having us.
Well, thanks so much for, for joining us. I think it's been a really informative uh, information session for the voters and we're going to go over, I've been moderating mostly here today. My partner Jeremy Ray has not had nearly as much to say. So Jeremy, you get the very last word, closing comments.
Well, I, I've learned a lot just from having you guys in here. I almost feel like, and I didn't know that you, Patrick, you've been uh blogging after the council meetings and things like that. Cause uh, you know, it's, it's stuff that it's good to know what's happening behind closed doors. We know that you guys are working away um, and doing these things, knowing that it's, there's, you know, no adversarial relationships going on. Um, you know, I think that's, that's helpful. And I think it might even be good to do this. I, it's not going to be election time, but even have somebody come on and give us updates from the city. I think that would be potentially helpful.
We'll just keep the questions coming in. So thanks again for joining us. Uh, good luck in the reelection. And uh, October twentieth is the, the big voting day?
Yeah, you can, uh, early voting is on October, I believe, the tenth, the thirteenth and the seventeenth are all early voting days. So you can show up and vote at a few locations on those days. Otherwise, October twentieth is a big day.
Awesome. Get out there and vote New West. Once again, a great big thank you to our guests for joining us. Once again, a great big thank you to our guests for joining us today. Chuck Puckmire, Jamie McAvoy, Mary Trentido, Patrick Johnstone. If you want to get ahold of them, you can find their contact information in the show notes. If you have questions or feedback for us, the co-hosts, please send that to feedback@morealestateshow.com. If you want us to direct follow-up questions to the candidates we had on today, if time permits, we may even have a chance to bring them back on before the October 20th election. So go ahead and send those questions. Uh, again, thanks for listening. We have been multiple offers or Real Estate Show with competing perspectives. I have been Matt Brabbins, joined by my partner, Jeremy Ray. We are the New West Guys. You can find us at thenewwestguys.com. And sadly missed today is our third co-host, Jeff McLennan. Jeff is at realestatenewwest.com. He is very excited to be joining us again next week. Next episode, we are going to hear from the New West progressives and their thoughts on housing in New West. Thanks for listening.